I had the liberty of sending out the recording of last week. Um, session to a few persons. Um, when it is sent out, it has a pass code that you need to. After clicking on the link, there's a passcode that you have to enter, but it comes with the, 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 the video itself. If you look in the, um, the, the WhatsApp message you get at the bottom of it, there is a code. So if anyone wants to, um, view what we did the week before, um, you can just go to our, um, WhatsApp group and just click on that link, recording of Bible study and you can review it, okay? Now, last week, we looked at Romans three, verse twenty seven to thirty one. That's five verses and that were the, the end of chapter three. And what we looked at is faith, the way that puts an end to human boasting. When we operate by faith and understand faith as opposed to the law, human boasting is excluded. Pride is driven away. Self righteousness is through the window. And works, good works, good deeds that some folks could wanna say that they can be accepted to God because of their good works. And, um, verse twenty seven focuses on faith excluding boasting. You see, it is not by the law of works that we are made righteous. It's not by the law of works, it's not how much work, good works we can do that make us be accepted to God. It is the law of faith and it means faith in the Son of God. You see, I'll come to that in the teaching where God loves his sons so much. He loves his sons so much that when we place our faith in him, he considers, he counts that faith in him as righteousness and that's it. That, I'm going ahead of myself, but I just needed to say that. Verse twenty eight of the text last week looks at faith justifies a man without the work of the law. It's faith and faith alone that justify us, not the law, not the law of works. And this is of extreme importance. A man is justified by faith and not by the deeds of the law. If, think about it, we're gonna be doing some reasoning. If a man had created himself and saved himself from sin and death by his own works and deeds, then he would be the one to be glorified. If man was able to do that, he deserved to be glorified. But what man can do is none, zero. Man did not make himself or can he save himself? So there is no boasting. We need to cut out the self righteousness. No boasting, it is by faith in Jesus Christ. Um, verses twenty nine and thirty, faith reveals only one God. You see, works would make you your own God, 'cause I did this by myself. I, 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 but faith, because it's the righteousness of the Son of God, it reveals only one God who deals with all equally. God created everyone. Therefore, he is the God of all, because he created everyone. God is the only God, therefore, all are justified the same way and that is by faith. The last verse of last week was verse thirty one. And it looks at faith upholds, the same faith upholds and establishes the law. So faith doesn't get rid of the law. 'Cause Jesus Christ himself said that he did not come to what? He did not come to do away with the law. He came to fulfill the law. No one could, Sister Shaw, fulfill the law. No one could. And the only way we now fulfill the law is by faith in the fulfiller of the law. Remember, the law is not just only the ten commandments. The law was six hundred and thirteen laws. That's a big number, you know, give me six hundred, I don't know, I'm happy. Six hundred and thirteen law, and if you break one law, you are considered a lawbreaker. Now, we believe in Jesus Christ, we put faith in him and we all fulfill the law, 'cause we are, we are faith in the fulfiller of the law. It's pretty simple, isn't it? Yeah, but I'm not saying the journey is simple, alright? The Christian pathway is not simple, but we have the enablement of the Holy Spirit to carry us through. But to understand those people who are trying to do good works to be recognized by God, to be accepted by God, it is totally a no-no. So that's the lucrative cap I've done and we're gonna move into today's, um, study. I must tell you that, um, the first study that we mentioned at the end of last week was Romans four, verses one to eight. It's in itself was a very short study, so I went on to had the other one that comes behind it on this one, so it will be a little, it's a little more lengthy and wherever the Lord bids us to stop, we will stop. So today, the first section, we'll be looking at logic. In this sense, it's like reasoning, logic, the evidence that faith alone justifies a man. We wanna reason this out. I'm gonna give you at least three logics, three reasoning that show you that it's faith alone that justifies man. Remember, justify means we become in right standing before God. We can now go in the presence of God. God is a consuming fire. He, he, he cannot co-exist in a sinful environment. He's too holy. Holy, holy, holy. That's the only, uh, the attributes of him that is three times repeated. And I know at least it's two times in the Bible, holy, holy, holy. He's holy, he's consuming fire and we can only go, when we pray, I will go to the throne of God, we can only go under the covering of the righteousness, the perfect righteousness of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen? So at this time, I will ask Sister Sandra to unmute and she will read Romans four, verses one to eight.
Good night, everyone. Reading Romans four through one through eight from the NIV version and it reads, "What then shall we say that Abraham or forefather discovered in this matter? If in fact Abraham was justified by works, he had something to boast about, but not before God? What does the scripture say? Abraham believed God and it was credited to him as righteousness. Now, when a man works, his wages are not credited to him as a gift, but as an obligation." Verse five, "However, to the man who does not work but trusts God, who justifies the wicked, his faith is credited as righteousness. David says the same thing when he speaks of the blessedness of the man to whom God credits righteousness apart from work." Verse seven, "Blessed are they whose transgressions are forgiven, whose sins are covered." Verse eight, where I'll stop, "Blessed is the man whose sin the Lord will never count against him." Amen?
Amen. Thank you very much, um, Sister. I'm trying to have a little issue here, I'm trying to start out.
Turn it, I've got two. Mobile device not found, ready to commit.
Okay. Okay, you guys can hear from the computer itself? Because somehow the speaker was connected and decided that it's no longer be, gonna be connected. Okay, so that I don't want to waste any valuable time, so. That's gonna be, um.
I can hear you.
Okay, Bishop. You heard Bishop?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Alright.
Alright, so let's continue. Um, Sister Sandra just read the text. Sister Sandra's just read the text, so we move on. You see, most people think they become acceptable to God by doing the best they can. I'm trying to live the Christian life the best I can and God knows and understands. And he knows that I'm not perfect, but that is like you're missing the mark. Most actually believe they sin, they secure God's approval by being reasonable good. And a particular religion, and I'm just gonna say, 'cause it's the truth, the, the Islam folks, they will give their heart out to you. Because their understanding is that on the judgment day, if their good does not outweigh their bad, then they're gonna, not gonna go to heaven. And if, even when they're good, even when they're good outweighs their bad, they are not absolutely sure, they have no assurance that they will go to heaven. So they live totally under fear. Okay, and that's what we had studied when we did the study on them. So they, a lot of people believe that they get God's approval by being reasonable good, by being respectable, by being an upright citizen and by occasionally helping others who are less fortunate. And those things are good stuff, but it will not make you acceptable to God. But note, this is a shocking fact. A man is not justified by works, but by faith. And logics and reasoning prove this fact. This logic and reason is scriptural and that's what we're gonna be looking at. The text that Sister Sandra read can be outlined as follows. Verses one to three, look at the logics, the reasoning of Abram's justification and his salvation. Verse four to five, looks at the logic or the reasoning of a worker or a laborer reward. And verses six to eight, looks at the logic of David's word about the blessed man. So let us do, look at the first some, Edin, the logics of Abram's justification and salvation.
Excuse me, sir, and the text was taken from?
The text was taken from Romans four, verses one to eight.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask you, Bishop, have you find it already?
Not, no, not yet.
Okay, I'm gonna ask someone to read, um, Romans four, verse one to three for us.
Romans four, verse one to three. "What then shall we say that Abraham, or forefather according to the flesh, discovered in this matter? In fact, Abraham was justified by works, he had something to boast about, but not before God? What does scripture say? Abraham believed God and it was credited to him as righteousness."
Amen. Uh, if, if in fact Abraham was justified by works, he had something of course to boast about, but, there's a big but, not before God. A person can look at Abram's life and logically see that a man is not justified by works, but by faith. Abram was not justified by works, for works cannot, works cannot qualify a person to glorify themselves before God. Works cannot do that. If Abram had been justified by works, he would be qualified to glorify himself before men. But as the scripture says, he would not be qualified to glorify himself before God. So let's think about this, uh, let's reason this out, uh, uh, or see the sense and the clearness of the matter. No man is ever qualified to glorify themselves or himself or herself before God. No act or work or combination of acts and works could ever elevate a man to such a height as, such a height that he would be glorified and become qualified before God, no man. Remember, we are all fallen, broken, depraved people. God is holy and set apart. So there's nothing we can do to qualify ourselves before God. Abram was justified by believing God. How was this? Abram was justified by believing God. How does that come about? How, how do we explain that? Abram believed God. And God, he's the one working, he's the one acting, took Abram's belief and counted it. In other words, regarded it as his belief, um, regarded Abram's belief as righteousness. It was not Abram's work, but faith that God took and counted it as righteousness. A person is saved by faith. That is, God takes the person's faith and count that person's faith as righteousness. Uh, such must be the case, because God is perfect, is perfectly righteous. He cannot be righteous anymore. No person can achieve perfection. Therefore, no person can live in the presence of God. No person can live in God's presence outside of being covered under the righteousness of Christ. However, mark you, God is love. So what God does is to take a person's faith. Any person, any person's faith that is truly sincere. We're not talking about, sorry, lip service. Not talking about a person saying their faith, that, 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 that they have faith in Christ, but they're not living according to that faith. That is lip service. I'm not gonna say we all are on the same level of spiritual maturity and it's a journey, but the trajectory, the aim is to have faith and your faith is truly sincere. So what God does, he takes that person's faith and counts that faith as righteousness, as perfection. Therefore, a person can now live in God's presence by faith and justification. Therefore, no one will be declared righteous in God's sight by the works of the law. Rather, through the law, we become conscious of our sins. That's what is said in Romans three, verse twenty, and we said it last week. Paul said, "If the Lord didn't say, 'Do not covet,'" then he would not know that covetousness is a sin. So the law points us, points out to us sin. When the law is weak, it cannot stop us from sinning. It cannot have us obey itself. So that's why we need to have faith in Jesus. And when you think about, um, why does God justify a man through faith? There's two reasons presented. The first one, God loves everyone with a perfect love. God wants everyone to live with him in a perfect state of being throughout all eternity. That's what God wants. He doesn't want any of us to lose our soul, to die out of faith in Christ and go to hell. That's not what he wants. He wants us to live in a perfect state throughout eternity, all eternity. God is perfect, therefore, he alone can provide the only perfect way for a man to live in his present. Not your works. If you want to walk down Toronto or wherever city you're in and give everyone your entire salary, share it up and give it, because it's a good thing, some people need it and so on. Yes, you're doing a fantastic job, but that will not make you righteous. Righteousness comes only to faith in Jesus Christ. Because God is love, he has reached out from man by providing that perfect way through Jesus Christ, his son. For you know, the scripture says, "For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believed in him should not perish, but have everlasting life." For God did not send his son into the world to condemn the world. Christ didn't come to condemn the world. When he came, his first advent is not to condemn the world, but to save the world. But that the world through him might be saved. His second coming is gonna be different. His second coming, his second advent. When anytime we can see this, the sky ripped and it comes from heaven with a loud command, and the dead in Christ shall rise. And we who are remain, who are alive at that time will be caught up. We'll be changing the twinkling of an eye. Corruptible put on incorruption, mortal put on immortality in the blinking of an eye. What a day that will be, what a day that will indeed be. Second thing is that God loves his son. God loved Jesus with such a perfect love. Anyone who honors God's son, anyone who honors God's son by believing in him is accepted by God. Christians, we need to know these things, 'cause you have religions out there who do not believe in Jesus as God. They try to remove his deity. They try to remove his resurrection. Those people are not accepted by God. They are not, because they do not believe in Jesus, who the Father loves perfectly. But the, so the opposite is true, that's what I'm saying. That is, God takes, God, those people who do not love him, they, 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 they are in a bad position. So God takes that person's belief and count it as righteousness. The person receives the right, the rights. Not privilege, but the right to live in God's present in a perfect state of being. Based on the life that Sister Lois Walters Harris lived, the testimony, the reports, she is in a perfect state. And she's not up there looking down on her, her kids, on her, on children and so forth. She's too happy, enjoying Christ. We are left behind to ensure that we can see her one day. And so the onus is upon us now to live the life that God has called us to live. So Matthew seventeen, verse five, said, "While we, while he was still speaking, a bright cloud covered them, and a voice from the cloud said, 'This is my son, whom I love. With him I am well pleased.'" Listen to him. The voice from heaven, the Father, as though some people said, "There is no Father, he's just a title." The title was talking according to the scriptures, okay? The Father said, "This is my son, in whom I am well pleased." He loves this son so much that when we believe on his son, he accepts us. Um, the second, um, Edin, is the logics of the worker and the labor's reward. Can someone read verses four to five, Romans four?
I'll read pastor.
Okay, go ahead.
"Now to him that worketh is the reward, not reckoned of grace, but of depth. But to him that worketh not, be believer on him that judges thee ungodly. His faith is counted for righteousness." Do I keep going?
Um, you go until, yes, but yeah, you go to the end, to verse five. Did you finish verse five?
Yes, you said four and five.
Yes, sorry. Yes, I'm sorry, because my translation is
Oh, I was reading from King James Version, sorry.
Okay, no, you don't need to be sorry. It's just that I wasn't able to follow along to know that you had finished. But the, the NIV, thank you for reading, I assume that is Sister Linda.
Yes, it is pastor.
Okay, good, good. Now to the one who works, wages are not credited as a gift, but an obligation. However, to the one who does not work, but trusts God, who justifies the ungodly, their faith is credited as righteousness. So it's quite obvious. Um, brother Facy, sister Facy, brother Otis, brother Kazwin are just coming from work. And when they work, their wages is not something just credited to them, it's an obligation. They must be paid. So a person can look to the, at the day-to-day laborer and logically see that man is not justified by works, but by faith. Work imposed, work enforces a debt. Meaning that when you work, your employer owe you money. It's not like him feel nice and him credit you something, you work for it. Okay? When a man works, someone owes him something. If a man could work for righteousness, that is work so that God would owe him righteousness. Then God would owe man. But God, being God, is completely self-sufficient. Therefore, he cannot be put in debt, like he cannot be put in an obligation. He cannot be put in liability. Liability is when you owe people. Like I have a mortgage, it's a liability I have with the bank. So God cannot be put in debt to anyone. He cannot be made or forced to do anything. Believing in God result in righteousness. It is the ungodly who believe, who are counted righteous. We are all in that boat, we are counted righteous. Romans five, verse six says, you see, at just the right time, when we were powerless, Christ died for who? The ungodly. Christ died for the ungodly. Because this, this is because a person who admits that he or she is ungodly is a person who reject self. The person who admits that, A, I'm ungodly, I'm nothing, is the person who rejects self. Sensing is our, our need for godly help in spiritual matters. But if you don't see yourself in that light, you don't, you don't need this kind of godly help. He or she, that person who sense the need, he or she is ready to give himself up to surrender and honor and glorify God alone and depend only on God for righteousness. So you see why some of us lack the ability to surrender? Because we're not admitting to ourselves that we're nothing. We're just like the dry shawl, the leaf, the withered grass. That, but the slightest breath of air, it starts all around the place. We first have to come to acknowledge ourselves to be like that in comparison to a holy God. Think about this, God can never turn away from a person who senses and confesses his or her ungodliness. And who wishes to recognize and glorify God. God is indeed love. And God's love is bound to be moved by so humble an act or faith. The opposing teaching of scripture need to be remembered. The man who does not accept or admit is ungodly, does not reject self and sense the need for godly help, the man declared to be self-suff- self-sufficient and self-righteous. And self-righteous is not gonna help us in this Christian pathway. The wrath of God comes down on those who are ungodly. The wrath of God is coming down on people who identify themselves as Christians because they are suppressing the truth and they are not acknowledging God in their life. They are boasting in their own strength. Therefore, those self-righteous person is pronounced unjustified, not so much because God reject him. Not so much because God reject him or her, but the fact that he, the, 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 the self-righteous person has already rejected God. By living the life and not recognizing that they are ungodly, we are nothing. And we go to God in humility, humble, knowing that we need him. They have rejected God. For John three, verse eighteen said, whosoever believes in him is not condemned. Whosoever does not believe stand condemned already because they have not believed in the name of God's one and only son. We're gonna move on to the third and the final section of this first study. And we're gonna look at the logic of David's words about the blessed man. Can someone read verse six and eight for me, please?
Okay, I'll read pastor.
Go ahead, Sister Adasa.
Let me find my scripture here. Verses, four and five?
No, verses six and eight. Romans four, verses six and eight.
Okay.
Six to eight, sorry.
Six to, six to eight, okay. David says the same thing when he speaks of the blessedness of the one to whom God credits righteousness apart from works. Blessed are those whose transgressions are forgiven, whose sins are covered. Blessed is the one whose sin the Lord will never count against them.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's an awesome position to be in. Your sins will never be counted against you. And if you look deeply in the scripture, it didn't say you will not sin. We all have sinned and come of the glorious standard. Sin means we missed the mark. You miss the glorious standard that God created us for. You know, um, today I got up a little late and I start moving fast because I have to take kids to school and another kid is going to visit. And honestly, I didn't get to pray. And I was like, what, a further down, still in the morning, it just came to me and I said, God forgive me, I've missed the mark, I've sinned. I didn't take that time out, you know what? And I was just thinking about it, and I said, what I did was that the rules of men, that they have to carry these kids to school by a certain time, I put that over talking to my father in heaven. Because the baby had to go for a visit and the driver is coming at a particular time and I have to help in the process, I put that man's demand, I put over God. That's how I look at it, I sinned. So we all have sinned.
Yeah.
That's why we need to have a repentant heart and a repentant posture. When we go in the presence of God, we go with a repented heart. God forgive me because you have sinned, we don't even realize it. So we have to be intentionally in touch with our spirit man. I encourage you not to go through life, just floating through. You have to be in touch with yourself. Remember, we need to live in readiness. We need to be ready and waiting. You don't want, you don't know what will hinder you from entering, so try cover everything you can cover by keeping in touch with your Jesus, your God. You know, don't take your eternity for granted. Thank you, Sister Adasa. A person can look at prophecy, at the man described by David and see clearly that justification is not by works, but by faith. Psalm thirty-two, verse one and two says, blessed is the one whose transgression are forgiven, whose sins are covered. Blessed is the one whose sin the Lord does not count against them and in whose spirit there is no deceit. We want to look at who the blessed man is. Who the blessed man is. First, the blessed man is a man whose, who is counted righteousness, righteous, I should say, without works. That's one of the blessed man. You, you are counted righteous, not because of you doing all, jumping through all kind of loops, hoops and doing your way. If God credits and counts a man righteous without the works, then we know something. Man is not justified by works, that speak for instance, but by faith. Pure logics tells us this, pure logics. Therefore, the blessed man is a man who has righteous imputed, credited, counted to him, not because of his work, but because he believes God and God loves him so much that he takes the person's belief and count it at righteousness. Remember, it is not righteousness, but God counts it as righteousness. He counts that belief that you have in his son as righteousness. That is a method he uses. Okay, and he's God, he knows the right thing to do. Secondly, the blessed man is a man whose sins are forgiven and covered. Think for a moment, lawlessness, that sin exists despite the works and effort of men to eliminate it. It still exists, no matter how hard man try. Lawlessness still exists. If lawlessness is to be handled, it must be handled by God and God alone. He simply must forgive a person's lawlessness, a person's sin. Now note, logics tells us that if God loves that much, love enough to simply forgive man's sin, then justification is by, is not by the law, is by faith. Because God loves so much. You know, sometimes I've said it like this, it might sound very frightening, that God does not love. God, in other words, God does not simply love, he is what love is. He does not just simple dish out love, he is the embodiment of love. Even his wrath is because of his love for us. He wants to see us do the right things. He puts it in his words and we are to be obedient and see what Romans one said, what we, we did a few weeks ago. The wrath of God is revealed from heaven on, on godliness. The wrath is the judgment of God is revealed from heaven and on, on godliness and wickedness. Those who suppress the truth of God. So we don't, as Christians, we can't allow ourselves to be among the wicked and the ungodly because the judgment of God is revealed from heaven. And remember, it's not the judgment that we're looking, the final judgment. We have believers living under the judgment of God. Because God gives you up to do what you wanna do and that is also a form of judgment. We studied that a few weeks ago. So we need to ensure that we do our best to live in the presence of God. The third thing about the blessed man, the blessed man is a man whose sin are not imputed or counted against him. You remember, uh, in second Corinthians five, uh, it is said that he, God is reconciling the world to himself through Christ. Um, don't, 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 don't stone me if I miss out a few words. But what I'm trying to get at, he said, and your, the sins will be no longer held against you. Your sin. So you, we, when you believe in Jesus, you don't walk around like you carry the world on your head where sin is concerned. Your sins are covered. Don't focus on the sin you are, um, you're falling into. Focus on Jesus. Don't focus on the sin. Lay at the foot of the cross. Focus on Jesus. The more you focus on Jesus, the dimmer, the less, the weaker this habit becomes. But if you walk around, you, you, you have, you're doing this thing that you know is wrong. And you keep walking around with it, you're enticing yourself to do it again because it's really just in your memory and your mind. But when you put your mind on Jesus and leave it to them, as days goes by and you continue focusing on Christ, you don't even remember that you were indulging in that kind of behavior. So note that it's not the act of men, but the act of God that justify men and does not count sin against them. A man cannot justify himself before God. No man can free himself from sin. Whatever your sin is in your life, your willpower will never get you out of that sin. You have a responsibility, I'm not saying you don't. You have a responsibility to deny. If you, if you have a habit of stealing. And when you see money around you, you go to someone else, they don't have anyone there who steals, so they throw money all over the place. And money mean one cent, five cent, a hundred dollars, it's still money. And the enemy deposit in your mindset, take that. You now deny the flesh and say, no, I'm not taking it. But that doesn't remove it from your mind and so forth. Now you go to Jesus and Jesus who is watching you, who is God, see you made that effort. And Jesus who is watching you, who is God, see you made that effort not to take the money. He, by the enablement of the Holy Spirit, weakens that desire. But you in yourself cannot. And that's why we have to be very, very, um, when we see people. Who are making mistakes. You know, we have to pray for them. Support them. Don't be self-righteous because I don't steal. So why are you stealing? I don't steal. So how come you stealing? That's self-righteousness right there. Oh, I don't understand how some people sin. Oh, you don't sin? It's self-righteousness. And God is not pleased with that. You become a moralist. You become a religionist and we have to be careful. Now. No man can free himself from sin or force God to accept him. Justification, that is complete deliverance from sin and condemnation comes from God and from God alone. Not from some act of man. Therefore, logics, or one can say reasoning, tells us that. It is not works that justify a man, but it is faith. Isaiah forty-three verse thirty, twenty-five said, I, even I. Am he who blots out transgression for my own sake. And remember your sins no more. So with half an hour to go. I have the next lesson to start. And I'm gonna go into it and I'm not gonna hold your ransom. But wherever we stop, we can pick up next week. So this second lesson is very important, very, very important. Rituals, rules and ordinances are wrong ways for a person to seek justification. And, uh, it, it, it is based on Romans nine to twelve, four verses. And I'm gonna ask Sister Marlene to unmute and to read that for us.
Good night, everyone. Reading the NIV version, Romans four, nine to twelve. Is this blessedness only for the circumcised or for, or also for the uncircumcised? We've been saying that Abraham's faith was credited to him as righteousness. Under what circumstances was it credited? Was it after he was circumcised or before? It was not after, but before. And he received circumcision as a sign, a seal of the righteousness that he had by faith. While he was still uncircumcised. So then, he is the father of all who believe but have not been circumcised. In order that righteousness may be credited to him, to them, twelve and last. And he is then also the father of the circumcised. Who not only are circumcised, but who also follow in the footsteps of the faith. That our father Abraham had before he was circumcised.
Amen. Thank you very much, Sister Molly. This is so important because some people struggle. With their ri- rites and rituals and ordinances and so forth. Most people are religious in the sense that they keep some religious ordinances. Rituals and rules. This is both good. It's both good and bad. And we just need to be exposed to it to understand. Um, how it is good and how it is bad. Um, it's good in the sense that ritual cause a person to think about their higher power. So we do Lord Supper. When you're doing the Lord Supper. What are you thinking about? You're thinking about God, Christ, is, i- is death. Resurrection, ascension. You're thinking about things like that, you know? Um, so it's a, a good. In some sense, because it causes us to think about God. Oh, and it's bad. In the sense that rituals are usually thought to be the way a person becomes. Acceptable to God. Another ritual or ordinance is baptism. Some people believe that being baptized, that's it. We will come to understand that it's just a seal and a sign to what is already done in you. You're already made righteous. But so, we, we need to know how to balance these things, okay? The present, this passage is as clear as can be. Rituals. Is the wrong way for a man to seek acceptance and justification with God. And the text is outlined as follows. Verse nine, um, looks at who received the blessings of forgiveness. And verse nine again, look at Abram was counted righteous when he believed. Um, verse ten, Abram was counted righteous before. And that's a key point, before the ritual of circumcision. Um, verse eleven, Abram later received circumcision as a sign. Or symbol only. And verses eleven and twelve, Abram was chosen by God for a twofold purpose. Let's get into it. Um, so the first, um, subsection we're looking at is who. Receives the blessing of forgiveness. Romans four verse nine. I'm just gonna read that one. Is this blessedness? Only for the circumcised or also for the uncircumcised? We have been saying that Abraham's faith was credited to him as righteousness. Um, the word blessedness. Or blessing refers back to the blessed man. We just discussed in verse six and eight, when we look at who are the blessed man, alright? The man who have his sin forgiven, the man whose sin is not imputed, um, to him. And the man whose, um, sin. Yes, so we looked at that. So the blessingness of forgiveness is talking to that man. Who is blessed. Um, the blessed man is a man. Who is justified by faith, who is counted righteous without works. Whose sin is, are forgiven and covered, whose sin is not counted against him. Such a man is greatly blessed, blessed beyond imagination. But note a crucial or critical question. Is the blessing of forgiveness intended? For the circumcised only or for the uncircumcised also? For the Jews only or for the non-Jews, that the Gentiles also? For the religious only or for the non-religious? For the baptized only or for the unbaptized? For the saved only or for the unsaved as well? For the church member only or for the un-church also? Um, for the interested only or for the disinterested also? The overarching. Question is, is the blessing of forgiveness, of being justified by faith alone? Is it only for a few people or for all people everywhere? Now, Abraham's experience will illustrate that truth to us. So the second subheading which I'll also read because it's the same scripture. Um, speaks to Abram was counted righteous when he believed. And the same ninth verse said, is this blessedness only for the circumcised? Or also for the uncircumcised? We have been saying that Abraham's faith was credited to him as righteousness. Abram was counted righteous when he believed, not before. When he believed, his faith was reckoned. As for righteousness. The word reckon mean credited, to count, to deposit, to put to one's account. To impugn. Abram's faith was counted for righteousness or credited as righteousness. Note that Abraham was justified or counted righteous by faith. He was not justified by being religious. He was not justified by coming to church on Sundays only. And not engage or have some form of religiosity in you. No, he was not justified by performing good deeds. He was not justified by doing some good work. He was not being good, justified by being good and virtuous. He was not justified by submitting to a ritual. He was not justified by joining some group of believers. That wasn't why all he was justified. Um, Titus three, verse four to five reads, but when the kindness and love of God, our Savior appears. He saved us not because of righteous things we had done. But because of his mercy. He saved us through the washing of rebirth and the renewal of the Holy Spirit. And that brings me to the third with twenty minutes to go. I think we will be able to complete it. Um, Abram was counted righteous before the ritual of circumcision was instituted. Before it was instituted, before God said it was supposed to be done. Abram was already counted and righteous. So verse ten of Romans four reads. Under what circumstances was it credited? Was it after he was circumcised or before? It was not after, but before. And this is a crucial point in our Christian journey. And it is clearly, can be clearly seen. Abram made his decision to follow God. At least fourteen years before he was circumcised. So his righteousness have nothing to do with circumcision. The story of Abraham believing in the promise of God is a dramatic picture when you, when you look at it. Chris, scripture clearly state, he believed. In the Lord and the Lord counted, the Lord considered it to him. For righteousness. You find that in Genesis fifteen verse six. But the story of his circumcision is two chapters. Like two chapters after the fifteen, after the fifteen chapter. And fourteen years later, he was counted righteous long before he underwent the ritual. His righteousness. Is being accepted by God did not depend on a ritual. It depended, depended upon his faith and his faith alone. Okay, you get that? Abram, the fourth subsection, and there's five, so we're not doing bad with eighteen minutes, alright? The Abram received circumcision as a sign. Or symbol only. And this is what I want you to pay attention to mostly. Because we do have some rituals, some things we do. Well, these things won't let us be accepted to God. And they are important that you do them. But at the same time, I'm gonna teach against them in the sense that you will be accepted by God through them. Romans four verse eleven reads. And he received circumcision as a sign, a seal of the righteousness that he had. By faith. He received the circumcision as a sign, a seal of the righteousness that he had. By faith while he was still uncircumcised. So then. He is the father of all who believe but not. Who believe but have not been circumcised. In order that righteousness may be credited to them. Circumcision was not the road into God's presence. I guess some of the Jews, you know, those who are referred to as Jews, the unbelieving Jews and so on, they, you know? They, they believe that is the way. And, um, you must have heard or heard me talk about the Judaizers. You, those who are mixing Christ with something else. The Judaizers are Jewish who, who puts it out there that it's not Christ alone, it's Christ plus circumcision. Or it's Christ plus the, the Jews dead and so forth, but it's Christ alone, faith in Christ, okay? Um. Circumcision, it is not what made Abram acceptable to God. Circumcision did not confer righteousness on him. The circumcision he didn't, is not the one through which he became righteous. It's only confirmed. This is it. This is a trick. It only confirmed that he was righteous. It's a confirmation for him. It only bore testimony that he was righteous. Note that circumcision was both a sign and a seal, circumcision. And, and I want you to, I mean nowadays, folks do do circumcision. For mostly medical reasons. Um, you know, they want their baby, boy circumcised and so forth. But I want you to look in the same category, place baptism and church membership. And communion and those, those rituals, those ordinances, okay? So. It was, circumcision is a sign of celebration. It was a picture of the joy that the believer experienced in being counted righteous by God. The baptism is the same. You're now counted righteous by God. So you receive your baptism. You become a member of the church. Yeah, circumcision is a sign of witness, witness. The believer are testifying that he now believe and trust God. When you step in that pool, you're, you're making a public statement to your friends, relatives, whoever that. Hey, I have changed allegiance. I'm no longer worshiping Satan. Some people don't understand that if you're not worshiping God, you are indeed worshiping Satan because there is no middle ground. So when you step in that pool, and I know that some folks and, you know, might say, I baptized. When I was younger and I don't see the need to baptize again. I was baptized when I was younger, but then I went in the world and I commit a barrage of sin. And I baptize again because I'm sending a warning to my friends. Family to hold me accountable. And most importantly, I'm sending a sign to the demonic. And most importantly, I'm sending a sign to the demonic force. Satan and his emissaries, hey, are no longer on your side. So it's not a bad thing to do if you know the life you lived. When you were out of Christ and you were baptized before, maybe you don't even know what the importance of baptism was. You wasn't fully persuaded. And now you understand, i- 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 it won't kill you. You know? If a person is adamant that they don't want to do it, I will not force them. I will not force them, that's between them and God. But the teaching, if you understand the teaching, you would be in obedience. This a sign circumcision is a sign of a changed life and a separated life. The believer was proclaiming that he is going to live for God. To live a righteous and pure life that will only, uh, um, that was wholly separated to God. Those are what the ordinances and the rites. And the rituals does. A sign of identification. The believer was declaring that he was now joining and becoming one of God's people. Circumcision was a seal in that it's stamp, it stamps. God's justification upon Abram's mind. Circumcision was given as a seal. Or a stamp upon Abram's body to remind him that God had counted in righteous to believe. Every time Abram see that circumcision, he is reminded. It's a seal and a sign. It's a seal that shown that he was made already righteous by God. You see, we humans, we have a very short memory. And that's why symbols are important. Remember the children? In Egypt? What they went through? And Pharaoh would not let them go until when the last plague. He let them go and then what happened, changing mind after and start pursuing them. And their faith end up with the Red Sea. Yet the people, because their mind, their remembrance is so short. When they in the wilderness. And it wasn't a bed of roses in the wilderness and they were thirsty. What did they say to Moses? Man, you carry out, carry us out here to die? It's better we die in Egypt for the whole benefit. Take us back to Egypt. They don't remember that God has just delivered them. In a mighty way, so they could depend on God to provide for them. That shows our depravity, our depraved. We are. As human and we need God. Never you dare think that you don't need God. You need him every second of the day. We need him because we sin paid a number on humanity. Sin played a number, it was never meant to be like that. But thank God for Jesus, who is our redeemer. Circumcision was a seal in that it confirmed, it assured, it substantiated, it validated. Authenticated, strengthened and verified that God has done what God has done for Abram. The Bible never say that rites and rituals and ordinances bestowed anything on anyone. They are merely signs of something that has already taken place. They are merely shadows, not the substance. Colossians two, verse sixteen and seventeen reads, therefore. Do not let anyone judge you by what you eat or drink. Or what regard to, or with regards to a religious festival. Or a noonday celebration and the Bible say a Sabbath day. Your Bible is clear? When you come to understand the Sabbath day, the Sabbath rest is in Christ. It's not Saturday. We as believers. Are to keep every day holy. And as I say, every day holy, so Sabbath can be any one of your day. It doesn't have to be on the Saturday, don't live under the law. My friend here get days off and he doesn't get it. When I was young at the company, I get days off Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, whatever. One of those days is my rest. So Colossians is saying, don't let no one judge you about those things. These are shadows of things that were to come. The reality however is found in Christ. Your Sabbath is found in Jesus Christ, the Sabbath rest. Sister Lois is enjoying her Sabbath, can you imagine? She's laboring no more, no more doctor's appointment, no more pain, nothing, she's resting. She's to be convicted. And we who are trying to endeavor to live in readiness. To live, to be ready and waiting. And are living with the expectation of Jesus' return. That's all we will feel because having that mindset, it, it literally makes you get deeper in the things of God. And that's a mindset we should really embrace. This is not to take away from what, what I'm saying here is not to take away the importance of rites and rituals. They are extremely important. For they are the signs and seals of the Christian believer's faith. Listen up, to neglect. Or reject a right given by God is to be disobedient. To reject it is to be disobedient. To be disobedient is a clear sign that one was never sincere in the first place. If you are rejecting the, the ordinance or the ri- rites and ritual that God said you should, you were never serious. You were never serious, you're not sold out for Christ. Why wouldn't you baptize again if you were in the world indulging in sin and so forth? Why don't you, you're not sold out for Christ, I'll do anything, I'll run a mile and a half. If that's what Christ want me to do because of his finished record. But you are so into yourself, you're so self-righteous. That, oh, I'm not doing it. I'm baptized already. No, are you humble? You know what Christ did for you on the cross? A person who believes, who truly trust God is ready to obey God. To follow him even in the rites, ritual and ordinances of the church. We must always remember that Abram was not saved by the ritual of circumcision. For circumcision had not yet been given by God as a sign. But was, but Abram was immediately circumcised. After God established circumcision as the sign of righteousness by faith. Very simple said, if circumcision had existed when Abram first believed. Then Abram would have been circumcised immediately. He would have obeyed God. How do we know this? How we, how do we know that Abram would have circumcised immediately? Because Abram truly believed God. And when a person believes God, he immediately begins to do what God say. Circumcision and all other rituals are a matter of the heart. Not a matter of being spiritually cleansed by physical or material substances. For Romans. Well, you guys have to hear me now, something messed up here, yeah? Romans. Romans two, verse twenty eight to twenty nine reads. For he is not a Jew. Wish is one outwardly. Neither is that circumcision. Which is made outward in the flesh. He is a Jew, which is one inwardly. One inwardly. And circumcision. Circumcision is that of the heart. So we don't have to be circumcised, we honor grace and truth, honor, uh, the New Testament. For any religious reason, it's the heart, not the flesh. And in the spirit. And not in the letter. The letter mean that people just go through the motion to do what, the letter of the law, you're not really following the law. You, you, you're just doing it for the sake of doing it, it doesn't really impact you, you know? Who, those whose praise is not of men but of God. Here's a thought as I close off this, um, point. This is a strong message on baptism for the New Testament believers. A true believer should be baptized immediately upon believing. Baptism should be the first step of obedience in the believer's new life in Christ. Matthew five, Matthew three, verse fifteen said, Jesus replied, let it be so now. It is proper for us to do what fulfill all righteousness. That is when he was talking to John, when John was refusing, um, to baptize him. Then John consented. So I have nineteen seconds to go based upon my watch, but it's just one section. I'm gonna ask you permission, probably another five to ten minutes to just finish up this and then I won't have it next week. And this area speaks to Abram. Abram was chosen by God for, um, twofold. Abram was chosen by God for a twofold, um, purpose. So I'm gonna read verses eleven and twelve. Actually, I read eleven already, but I'm gonna do it again. He, and he received circumcision as a sign, a seal of righteousness that he. Had by faith while he was still uncircumcised. So then he's the father of all who believe but have not been circumcised in order that righteousness must. Might be credited to them. Verse twelve, and he is then also the father of the circumcised. Who not only are circumcised, but who also follow in the footstep of faith. That our father Abram had before he was circumcised. And this section, I really want you to put in memory those. But who also follow in the footstep of faith. That our father Abram had before he was circumcised. So before looking at the purposes, note that Abram is said to have a unique relationship to the world. He is seen not as a mere private individual, but a public man. A representative man of the human race. A pivotal, a central figure in human history, that's Abraham. He is seen as the father of all who believe God, a- as the head of the household of faith. God chose Abram for two specific reasons. First, Abram was chosen that he might be the father of all believers regardless of rituals or ordinances. Abram was chosen by God to be the father of all. Father of faith to all. All the ungodly, the heathen of the world who repent. So he is. The father of faith for them but who repent and believe in Jesus to be their Lord and Savior. No matter how uncircumcised or how unbaptized or, or how irreligious. Or immortal and unclean a person is, he has father Abram. He has a father in faith, a father to follow. So in following Abram, they will eventually repent and come to know God. I want you to get that clearly. Abram is the pattern. He has, uh, is the picture, the example, the standard, the father of faith to all the lost of the world, the lost ones. A person does not have to begin to go to church before God will save you, that's important. But some people take it further because of the lack of knowledge. By saying you don't have to go to church to be a Christian, that's an error. So I don't want you to get mixed up. When you become a Christian, you become a body of Christ and the church is the body of Christ. So you meet as a church, um, the body has many members. You can be a, a big thumb or, uh, index finger in the body. The body needs you, you're gifted, you're given a gift. So although I'm teaching that you don't have to becoming, to go to church before God can save you, it is faith in him. Okay? It does not have to be religious before God will accept you. It's put in your faith in Jesus Christ and be authentic about it. It does not have to be baptized or ritual, ritualized before God will forgive you of your sin. What must be done is believe God and believe God's promises. When a person bows in humble faith and believe, two things happens. God counts, immediately God counts his faith as righteousness. Second, immediately he arrives and is baptized. And begins to keep all the commandment rituals and ordinances of God. Luke five, verse thirty one to thirty two says, Jesus answered them. It is not the healthy who need doctor, but the sick. I have not come to call the righteous, cause the righteous are righteous in good standing. But the sinners to repentance. The second purpose, God chose Abram. Abram was chosen that he might be father of the circumcised, of the religious who follow. The, in his footstep of Abram's faith, follow in the steps of Abram's faith. Note, it was not being circumcised, baptized, ritual, ritualize. Religious, good or virtuous that justify a religious person. It is walking in the step of Abram's faith that caused God to accept the religious person. The religionist cannot earn merit. The religionist cannot earn merit or work his way into God's presence and righteousness. He can only trust God for the righteousness of Jesus Christ. And the last verse I leave with you here is Matthew seven verse twenty-two to twenty-three. Many will say to me on that day, Lord, Lord, did we not prophesy in your name? And in your name drive out demons? And in your name perform many miracles? Then I will tell them plainly, I never knew you. Away from me, you evil doers. And that brings us to the end of our Bible study. Thank you very much for the extra eight minutes. Next week, we'll be looking at the law, the wrong way for a man to be justified. The law, the wrong way for a man to be justified. And that will be covered in Romans four verses thirteen to sixteen. So as we're about to close off in prayer, and I've gone over my time, I still want us to pray our few prayers here. We don't have to pray long prayers for God to hear us. We wanna pray for Sister Lois, well, to her family, Jackie and her siblings and grandchildren who lay their mom, their grandmother, oh, loving sister to rest yesterday. We wanna keep them in prayer. It is fresh in their mind. And we don't know, we just wanna pray for them. We wanna pray for Sister Goldburn's family. The funeral for her daughter will be this Saturday at this local church at ten viewing until eleven. Service starts at eleven. We wanna come out and support Sister Goldburn as much as we can, okay? And Sister Gray will be flying to Jamaica the end of this week to lay her son that she greatly miss to rest. The funeral is on the tenth of September. Sister Gray will be leaving with the family on the sixth, that's Saturday. Sister Dunkley will also be leaving this week. If I'm not mistaken, is the fifth to attend her brother's funeral, her youngest brother. His death burial funeral will be on the thirteenth. We want to remember Sister Dawn Edwards has asked for prayer for Lady Lassie Pamela. She was diagnosed with breast cancer and she wasn't handling it well. We want to pray that God will comfort her. And if she does not know Christ, she will turn over life to him who is the great comforter, okay? Our own Deacon Arden will be having a procedure soon. And we want to pray for him, medical procedure. We want to keep him in our prayers. It will be this month, I think, they gave me the information. But as you know, I am not as young as I look. It will be the twenty-fifth of September. So we wanna keep Deacon Arden in prayer, okay? So let us all just go to the throne of mercy now. And the Holy Spirit have heard all these names. So if you don't remember one or two, God has already been notified what we are praying about. Eternal God, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Though great I am, the lover of our soul. We thank you, oh God, that you would have allowed us to come into this kind of knowledge. Knowing God that when we put our faith in your Son, the Son you love with a perfect love, oh God, we honor and put our faith in him, you accept us. Oh God, it is such a joy to know that you love us so much that you have adopted us in your family. So Lord, I pray for each and everyone who is in hearing of this teaching and who will also hear it that has been recorded. Oh God, that you would allow them to understand and open their minds, oh God. That they will be no longer babes drinking milk, but they will be maturing in your words. Oh God, that they themselves can become disciples of many who need to hear about you and carry out the Great Commission. Remember the family members of Sister Lou, oh God, everyone, oh God, the entire bloodline, oh God, remember them, comfort them, God. Give them, oh God, that desire to be like their loved one, Sister Lou. Father, remember the Goldburns family. Oh God, we are about to lay their loved one to rest in a few days' time. Father, I pray that you would grant them that comfort. And I pray, God, that out of this event, someone will come to have a relationship with your son. Father, I pray for safe travel of Sister Gray and her family going to Jamaica. Oh God, it's not a joyful trip, but a necessary one. Father, I pray, God, that you will cover her, oh God, help her, oh God, to be able to handle the ups and downs of the thoughts that will come in her mind. Oh God, I pray that you will care for her. Remember Sister Dunkley, as she too will be traveling. Oh God, I pray, Lord, that you will just, oh, let your angels, oh God, go ahead of the planes. Oh God, be the pilot, oh God, as they travel. Father, your servant Vincent Arden. Oh God, you know him, you know everything about him, oh God. You know his heart desire, oh God. As he, oh God, comes to this juncture, oh God, where he will be doing a procedure. God, we trust you. We know that you are sustaining God and you are a healing God. And we are just inviting you, oh God, into this situation that you will be mighty, that you will perform, oh God, what you know best to do, the love you have for your son. Father, I pray also for Pamela. Oh God, that you will comfort her heart. And oh God, if she have no, don't have the relationship with you, oh God, you will touch her heart and she will come into a relationship with you. And if she does, I pray, God, that you will strengthen her inner man, that, Lord, she will see you being glorified even in her illness. Have your way now. And I say thanks in Jesus's name. Amen. I just wanna say good night to everyone. Thank you so much for coming on. We had a lovely turnout, over thirty persons. And I know that you are all doubled up. Not all, but most persons have more than one person watching or online. I thank you. Having a house here with me, it had increased from six to nine, so it's ten of us in the house. So we had over forty persons being engaged. So now I'm gonna say good night to each and everyone. Allison, good night. Good night, Brother Brown. Sister Dunkley, Sister Davy, good night. Sister Martin, Donna Short, good night.
Good night.
Let me see, Sister Jenny, Sister Joan Williams, good night. Sister Deaconess Brown, Cousin Lillian, good night. Sister Pat Campbell from Mapan, Clarinden, good night. Sam G, Sam G, Sam G. Oh, Samantha.
Samantha.
That's Sam, Sam, S M, A O three thirty-two F, good night. Sister Sandra, good night.
Good night, everyone.
Mona, good night. Sister Sharnet, good night. Sister Cynthia, Mother Nick, and who else in that household, good night. Sister Gray, good night. Sister May Charles. Mister Terry, good night, sir. Thank you again for coming. Sister Traveling, good night. Sister Winsome. We have a praise report for Sister Winsome. Her mom is out of the hospital.
The hospital.
That's a praise report.
Amen.
Amen. Bishop, you are a user, you see? Bishop is the one that's on as user, you know?
Yes, thank God.
So good night, everyone.
Everyone, have a blessed.
Good night, everyone. Have a good night. God bless you all.
The one that I missed out saying good night to, forgive me, all right?
Good night.
Baimutan.
Good night, everybody.
Baimutan, Sister Martin, Sister Bobbit Martin. You see her glasses? Oh Lord. Yes. Jenny, Sister Pat Campbell. Deacon Bishop.
Yes, sir.
Sister Pat Campbell is on, sir.
Yeah, she's making sure she hear her name.
Yes.
Get used to it. They gonna fall out in heaven.
Bishop, good night. That thing come on, give me too much problem.
That's all right, man. Thank God. That's good problem.
Pastor, I was wondering, who is Sister Martin, you know?
Oh, I was referring, my apology. I left off. End line.
It's okay, never mind.
But that's what you have on our profile anyways.
Thank you for backing me.
Who talking to you? Where did you all come into the argument?
You're talking to my, you're talking to my pastor, right?
You know, I didn't, I didn't pick up that Sister Sandra. Thank you so much. That's why I referred to her, Martin.
Oh my God.
Yeah. Yes, guys. All right. I see, Sister Cynthia, I see Mother Nick. Hi, Mother Nick. Hey, how you doing, man? Hey, young boy. Good night, everyone. I'm gonna shut down now, okay?
Good night.
Good night, good night.